Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Mayor Jerry Cook. Today, we're talking about both the June 4th and our June 18th City Council meetings. Thanks for joining us today.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
We decided that summer is pretty much here tomorrow or Saturday or something like that?
June 21st is official. It's been really nice and pleasant, a few degrees below average, so it's been nice and cool. Windows are open.
Yeah, no humidity as far as what we're used to normally, so that's been nice. Haven't had to have the AC on quite a bit, but it's supposed to warm up here a bit, I think.
So, which is a good point to remind people. Get out there and clean your air conditioning condenser because it's going to be full of cotton from all the cotton coming down this spring.
Yeah, we've had a lot of that, and then we also just had the educational piece that that cotton can start fires, so be careful with that, too.
Or don't be planting a seed now for those that didn't know that.
You didn't hear it here, but apparently it can be an issue. All right, let's move into things here. First, on our June 18th meeting, we had a presentation, actually a swearing in of our new police officer or our newest police officer.
Right, right. And I love when Chief Wise comes and does just this great job introducing the officer. And I like how he always introduces their badge as this is the citizens of Coon Rapids badge. And I think that really sets an understanding. But his name was Ryan Olson, and he's a local guy, grew up in Andover. Beyond just being a hockey player also, which seems to be there's a connection there. Real, real good young man.
Yeah, and it was nice to see his dad here as well. He's in law enforcement as well.
Yeah, I believe he'm Minneapolis Police Sergeant. And he seemed pretty proud. He was in his full uniform and did the badge pinning, and that's always an emotional thing.
Yeah, always fun to see, see when there's a connection like that. All right, well, congratulations to him. Welcome aboard. Under our consent agenda, we wanted to talk about the council accepting a right-of-entry agreement with JSN Properties LLC. This is over on Exion Street, kind of north of Highway 10, and this sort of explains, I was asking you this today, they've cleared a bunch of trees on the north side of Highway 10, and it's for this project.
Yep, and this has been a pretty, pretty popular question that a lot of us didn't know the answer to. And it's JSN Properties LLC, and what this item was, was giving a right-of-entry to the city so we can go onto their private property and exercise the hydrants. There's a giant pipe that runs through there, six-foot pipe or something. So it gives, grants the city access to do any of the maintenance or the checking of public products or public service. And what was interesting is it's an 85,000-square-foot office warehouse space. I don't know what the breakdown between office and warehouse is, but an 85,000-foot building is a significant building. And apparently, they didn't come to us for any aid or anything out of conformist, conformity, because this is the first we've seen of it on the city, at the city council. So it's nice, it's nice to see that finally developed and another business coming to town.
All right, but city staff did review this and also the planning commission reviewed it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it just, it did not come to council for any action because it's been staff level and planning commission.
Yeah, all right, well, it answered the mysterious question of why the trees are gone. All right. Council considered a resolution awarding a contract. This is for a pedestrian bridge at Erlinson Park and also Dahlia Park culvert installation.
Right. So it's basically two trail projects, and the Erlinson Pedestrian Bridge, that's actually very close to City Hall here, right off of Avacet. And then, and then the Dahlia, Dahlia Park culvert installation. Dahlia has a little creek that runs through the park there, and the bridge that goes over it, it's a really cute little bridge, but it's only three feet wide. We can't get equipment over it. We, you know, every year, there's the big, you know, hundreds of runners that go for the firecracker that all get bottlenecked there. So the bridge is coming out. We've got, we're getting permission to put culverts in there and just put the trail over the top of that. And then there'll be a little adjustment to the trail because there's some, there's some indication that part of the trail might be on private property there, so they're getting all that figured out, too.
All right. Moving along, council considered a preliminary and final site plan. This is for a apartment project in the Port Evergreen area of town. This is something council has spent several meetings discussing. This was actually tabled from the first meeting in June, and a decision was made at this meeting.
This is, this has been a long time coming, and it's been a very controversial project. It started out, they wanted to put in 184 workforce units down there, and they were proposing a very low parking ratio, significantly less than what Coon Rapids allows. Coon Rapids requires 2.25 parking spaces per unit, and this was coming in at like 1.2 or 1.4 or something. Lot of back and forth, lot of meetings. It's a, about a $38 million project is my understanding. The final iteration of it, though, is 164 units, and the parking that will be there will be 1.7 units or 1.7 parking places per unit. Still a lot of concerns whether that's enough or not, so they, in between the last two meetings, they acquired the parcel immediately next to that and laid it out so they could show 66 more parking places in there. They called it proof of parking. So if they need more parking, that will trigger them to develop that into parking. And I don't know when they're going to start it, but it's right off 94th Avenue and Springbrook Drive, near the Muddy Cow and the Holiday Inn Express and those areas.
So this was a single-family lot that they purchased?
No, this, this was a 4.68-acre parcel that was zoned for high-density residential. So it's, it's zoned for exactly what's going there, but what they're putting in there is a little more intense than our code allows.
With the home that was purchased for the parking, is that a home?
It's a home, but that whole neighborhood is part of our River Rapids overlay district, so we have a lot of, we had, we have a lot of movement in what can go on those lots. And in fact, until this year, single-family homes weren't even allowed in there.
Right.
You know, they were non-conforming use. Yeah, I think that was what it was. So at any rate, so this spring, though, the developer that originally had owned most of that neighborhood had decided that this wasn't going to pan out. It wasn't going to become this big office park or, or housing park that he wanted. And so they, they divested of the properties they owned there, and they also owned this parcel. And so, no, it, so what's going there is what it's designed for. It's just a little bit more intense.
Okay, but the parking would not be put in? The city at any time could say, there's a parking issue, we need you to develop this into parking?
Yeah, so, and that's, that's really where the, the parking issue becomes if all of a sudden, people in the apartments decide that the street is more convenient for parking or the street is, you know, is going to make up for the, a lack of parking on-site. Or even right immediately next door, you've got the Holiday Inn Express, all of a sudden, they could be parking there. So if the city determines that parking is an issue, that will trigger them to put in the additional 66 parking places. And at that time, they would have to come do a site plan approval with the planning commission, and that would be bringing the neighbors back in again to make sure there's enough of a buffer and things like that.
All right, and previously, TIF financing was approved for this project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and they, and the developer went after some bonds or was getting some funding, and that was going to run out by the end of the month, so a decision needed to be made, essentially, whether this project was moving forward or not.
Yeah, they had a January 24th deadline they were trying to get ahead of.
Okay, June?
June 24th, thank you.
June 24th, right. Okay, yeah. All right, and these apartments, is this, this market rate apartments or?
So they're considered affordable or workforce, and so the, I think you have to be below 60% of Anoka County median to qualify to be in there. But because of all the, because of the TIF and because of the federal tax assistance, they're able to put in a very nice product, all, you know, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, you know, plenty of community space, green space, tot lot, dog park, you know, it's, it's a lot of amenities that you can't build in without that assistance.
All right, and we don't have a lot of new apartment projects in our town, so I imagine that's a draw as well.
Well, yeah, that. I mean, we do have the new Sherman project going in next to the North Star train station. And so, these are the two. And that, that was the first one approved since 1993.
Yeah.
Or the first one built. I mean, River North Apartments is a senior housing, Autumn Glen Senior Housing. We had tentative approval on one on Coon Rapids Boulevard, but that just didn't come to fruition.
All right, and the one up by the North Star commuter rail station, that first building is opening this October already.
That's my understanding. Yeah, it's, it's interesting to see cranes that big in Coon Rapids.
Yeah, yeah, they're making progress up there. All right, so council basically approved the preliminary and final site plan, and it was on a four-to-three vote, correct?
Yeah, so it came out of the planning commission as a recommendation to the, to the city council, and the planning commission was split on it. They went four-to-three on it, and the council was four-to-three on it, too.
Yeah.
All right. We're hoping for the best.
Yeah, and preliminary plat and the final plat for Port Evergreen Apartments was approved as well, and there was also a bond issue. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, so it was the final thing for the TIF.
Revenue bonds, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so quite a few actions on that. We spent quite a bit of time on, on this over the past couple of meetings, so.
Not as much time at this meeting as the last meeting.
Correct.
But in the last meeting, we were trying to find a way out of it without just bringing it to a vote. Because bringing it to a vote would have been done.
Yeah.
One way or the other, it would have been done. And tabling it allowed the developer to, to have another couple of weeks to figure out with staff some alternatives, and that's when they came up with the additional parking.
Yeah, and to their credit, they didn't give up. They kept coming back with a different plan because this has been here a couple of times, so.
Yeah.
All right. Council considered a resolution authorizing an application for economic development funding for RMS Company. This is exciting always to see businesses expanding in town.
It's, yeah, and this particular business, RMS, is Coon Rapids' largest private employer. And right now, they're at 925 employees, and I think this is their fourth major addition here in town. And it's just, it's an amazing company. It's just a, it's really, we can be very, very proud that they are here. It's a high-tech manufacturing company. They've got, it, they manufacture the tiniest little parts for inside of pacemakers and inside medical devices. They've, they've got an, an area that manufactures orthopedic devices, and it's, it's, it's an amazing company.
All right, and good-paying jobs as well, it sounds like?
Lot, a lot of very good-paying jobs, a lot of really high-tech machining jobs. And I've toured it, I think, three times now, and I'm looking forward to touring it again once they get the next addition on. But it's, it's just, it's so impressive. It's, you know, when you think of the old machine shops?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not that at all. It's absolutely clean, it's, most of it's very quiet. Yeah, it's cool.
And it's about a 60,000-square-foot addition is what it looks like here, so.
I don't even know what that brings them to.
I think it says to their, I just saw it on here and I lost it, 275,000 square foot.
Okay.
So over 300,000.
Yeah, bring about 300.
Wow.
And each addition, they go, well, but that's it, we don't know where else to go. And then they, then they find another direction to go and find one more little piece of land to acquire and.
Yeah, or others always up, too, right?
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Can you, uh, let's move along here to next item here. Council considered accepting the 2018 annual financial statement, and did accept it, in fact.
We did, yeah. In fact, we had a, the auditor was in at a workshop prior to the council meeting and went through, kind of gave us the 30,000-foot view of it. And, and really, that's, what's really important for residents to know is we have a very well-run city, and that's, and that's not a thing for city council that, I mean, the cities, we have a very, very quality staff, finance, city manager, department heads, you know, the staff in general. It's very well done, and I would encourage folks to, this is the Bible. I mean, this is everything about the city, the 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. This is the information you're looking for if you want to know anything about what we owe, what we're paying, and it's all online on the city's website.
It's a lot of reading, or late-night reading or something like that, too?
Something.
All right, well, it's out there. CoonRapidsMN.gov, and while you're there, you can check out the redesigned city website.
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting, too. It's a much friendlier site than, yeah, it's, if you want to know, yeah, it's a good place to find out what's going on.
All right. We will move back now. That's all we had from our June 18th meeting that we wanted to talk about. Our first meeting of the month on June 4th, we also had a police item there at the beginning. This was to introduce the graduating police reserves.
Yeah, and I don't recall how many there were, but it was, it was like 11 or something. And the police reserves just do yeoman work around town. I mean, they help with, with events, they help with traffic control, they, they're, I know, I know they participate in annual training.
Yeah, and they're unpaid staff members, right? They volunteer their time.
Well, yeah, and they, and they spend quite a bit of money buying the uniforms out of the staff, you know, so. But like Chief Wise said, this is where I started. You know, this is where I started in Coon Rapids, was in the police, you know, police reserves.
Yeah, they obviously like what they do to continue doing it.
Yeah.
And giving their time.
Yeah, when you, they're, they're particularly visible at like our July 4th event. You'll see them at the barricades, you'll see them around directing traffic. And, yeah, it's important.
All right. We had another presentation that evening as well. We had the president of Mercy Hospital here.
Sarah Krieger, yeah. We have a, we enjoy a very nice partnership with Mercy Hospital, and we're very fortunate to have such, and such a great hospital in town. You know, it's one of the top 100 in the nation's out of thousands of hospitals. It's one of the top 50 in heart centers. It's one of the top three or four in the state of Minnesota. So it's really an asset to have it here. And this was a memorandum of understanding, and what they do, let me just read it here quickly. Memorandum of understanding outlines Mercy Hospital's dedication to serving indigent, uninsured, and underinsured patients in our community. And then she also came and explained the new 340B drug program where it, drug manufacturers provide outpatient drugs at reduced prices and administered by the Health Resources and Service Administration. So it's just another, another program they have.
All right, well, she's wonderful. I've interviewed her before. She's very down-to-earth, nice lady, and good to, good to hear from her and get an update on kind of things going on at the hospital.
Yeah.
All right. Council adopted a resolution accepting a Community Strength Foundation donation in the amount of $4,000, and we wanted to talk about this because this went to our summer concert series, which has kicked off.
Right, yeah, I think we're, we've had two, or two concerts in, and our third, our next one is today. By the time anybody sees this, it'll, will be three concerts in. So, yeah, I mean, this is the necessary money for, for hiring the bands down there at the dam, and I really encourage folks to get down there and check it out. It's a great Thursday evening down there, and if you get down there early enough, the Lions still have food, and the Boy Scouts are there selling refreshments, popcorn, beverages, and it's, it's a nice evening, and it's, it's nice to have the funding from the Community Strength Foundation.
Yeah, makes it go each year, that's for sure.
Yep.
Council considered a resolution, this was for Common Bond Communities Housing Revenue Bonds, and you guys held a public hearing on this.
Right, so this was a fairly large bond issue, and the benefit that will be seen in Coon Rapids is Galway Place, which I believe is 36 townhomes on Hanson Boulevard, will be remodeled, refurbished from this. And Common Bond does a nice job running them, and.
So this had to come through the city, but there's no commitment to the city?
There's no commitment to the city, correct, yeah.
As far as financial or anything like that?
No obligation, we don't, you know, we don't bear a burden on that.
Yeah, all right. Council considered an award of a contract for improvements to Coon Rapids Boulevard. This is in the Port River Walk area, and this is kind of unique because I don't feel like we normally have to reject bids, but in this case, you did.
We did, yeah. Well, there was only, I believe there's only.
I should say bid.
Yeah, right, there was only one bid that came in, and I think it was 35% over what the project was estimated to be. Now, we are seeing bids coming in higher this year than typical, higher than estimates, but that was significant, and we just thought, you know what, in only one bid, let's just wait and see if we can get a better, better opportunity for bids later.
All right, and these were to some roadway improvements they want to do to the Boulevard there between Avacet and Egrit, new traffic signals at both intersections.
Yep.
And some sidewalks and trails as well.
Yeah, street skapes, yep. Coon Rapids Boulevard really needs some attention down there, and with the new home development coming in, it's, it's a nice time, but, but also, you, you can't just pay crazy amounts for it either.
Yeah, got to be conscious of the budget, that's for sure.
Plus, plus, it was a little bit moot because the county was rejecting it as well, and we need to be able to, you know, we need to have, be on the same page with them.
All right, so likely, they will go out for bids again at some point to see what they can get.
Yep, work still needs to be done.
All right. This is probably a good time to also talk about a resolution of support for a capital bonding request for a pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Yeah, so this started as a request to the Metropolitan Council for funding for this trail, and it's really, it's more of a regional benefit. It's really for the trails going through. And, you know, and the original bond would have been 80% funding from the Met Council. Then they decided that this really is a more regional and should be more the state should be funding this. So it's going in now for a bonding request, but the state only gives 50%. Well, so, we're not interested in spending $2 million locally on this bridge that really doesn't even service this neighborhood to get across to the park very well. So, but this keeps it in play, it keeps it rolling. If the state comes up with the bonding, we can make some changes to make it better service the neighborhood, and then we still need to find local partners before we're going to be interested in paying.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be a nice asset if we get it. It'll become kind of a gateway to Coon Rapids on Coon Rapids Boulevard. It'll be a very attractive bridge, but it has to make sense for us to spend much money on it.
All right, and we're still talking sometime because this is a request basically of the 2020 legislature?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll find out by next May whether or not it's successful or not.
Sure.
Unless there's a special section.
Last time, I think it took us two years to find out if any of the bonding things were successful, but.
That's true, you just never know. All right, well, you know what? While we're on the topic, let's also talk about council adopting a resolution improving plans and specs. This is for Port River Walk grading and authorizing solicitation of bids.
Yeah, so the, the new developer coming in there needs to do a lot of grading for the streets and things, but because the paperwork isn't completely done, they can't do it yet. However, the city can authorize it, the city can, can go ahead and do it and then be reimbursed from the developer once they get everything, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. So that way, it enables us to get the project started. So that's all this is, it's just, we're, we're basically advancing them, the, the street construction, and we'll get reimbursed for it.
All right, and construction is supposed to get going down there anytime now, right?
That's.
This fall, maybe?
September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we'll start seeing something happen there this fall.
You hope so.
That's been a while as well. All right, I think we're done with Port River Walk. I'll jump back to where we were. This was an adoption of ordinance, a couple of ordinance actually relating to multi-unit recycling collection. We've talked about this a couple of times as well.
Yeah, well, in fact, last year, we had an ordinance in place and, and realized it was, it was a bit of an overreach, so we rescinded that one. And now this one is a lot more scaled back. It's more education-focused. It only impacts the multi-housing residents in, in town, and I believe 48 of the 50-some units were already compliant to this anyway. So it just, it just sets a standard for, you know, recycling, you have to have a certain number of, certain amount of capacity of recycling per unit, and you can, and that can be picked up weekly or every other week, whatever works out, as long as you meet in that capacity.
Yeah.
The biggest focus on this is education. Education, education.
Yep.
Because so many people want to do the right thing, they want to recycle, but to that end, they put too many things in there that aren't recyclable, and it just causes more harm than anything. They would seriously be better off not recycling anything rather than recycling wrong things.
Yeah.
Because it messes with this, with the flow and the stream.
And I think it is complicated because people hear, I can recycle this number and that number, and, and some of that stuff needs to be done at the recycling center. Some of that can't be curbside.
Right.
So there is, you do need to have that knowledge and that education piece that's included in this with new residents will be helpful.
Yep, so annually, they have to provide education for the residents, and, and the city will provide all of the signs for the recycling bins and for the trash bins, what can go in, what can't go in. I just, I was out looking at a, I was out in an apartment building, and they had all the bins out there, so I just thought, as long as I'm here for something else, I'm going to take a peek. Big sign on there, what can go in there? You look in there, and it's just trashed. You know, there's big white plastic garbage bags of, it might be recycling in the bags, I don't know.
Yeah.
But you can't put your recycling inside of plastic bags like that.
Right, right.
So it's just, it's frustrating, but it also, it's a, it's a little bit of a moving target because what can be recycled has changed over the years. You know, as the market for the recyclable products deteriorates, all of a sudden, they're changing what can go into the stream, and so we just, we have to do a better job with education.
All right. Moving forward, council approved a request for dimensional flexibility. This is for Alina Health. We were talking about Mercy Hospital earlier. Here's another project they're doing.
Yeah, so Mercy Hospital is expanding, but like, came in, well, it's been approved now, to expand their, it's basically their employee parking lot. And it's, and it abuts a couple of city streets. I think it's Dakota and 115th or something. And, but it required a lot of creativity because there's a big ponding corner there, and what this is going to do is actually move the ponding, the water collection point under the parking lot. So in order to get past that, they increased capacity about four times, and it's been approved anyway. It's going to increase their parking spaces and still control the water.
All right, and I know that's much needed up there. They've had parking issues, they've built that parking ramp, I'm sure which has helped. This will probably help even more.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, you know, I just saw a couple of different social media posts from people that worked there that were excited that our parking lot is expanding, so.
Much needed up there. All right, that's all we have to talk about for that meeting. Want to mention here, a new program launched just last week, which is called Rec on the Spot.
Yeah, that's, that's really exciting. We got the trailer, we got the, the truck that just shows up at the park, opens it up, and if you look on the calendar, you know when to send your kids up there, when to bring your kids up there. And they've got all the, the different games, and they, it's a structured, structured recreation out in the park.
Yeah, so it's kind of staff bringing recreation and programs to you. It's on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. There's a couple of sessions each day at different parks, and again, you can find that information on the city's website, which is CoonRapidsMN.gov. If you look on the calendar there, it will have all the upcoming dates and times. Also should mention, our neighborhood meeting series, we kind of got washed out on our first evening.
Well, potentially washed out.
Almost, yeah.
Yeah, it turned out to be a nice evening.
Yeah.
But the, the rain wasn't very far south of us, and it would have been a very nervous evening. You know, plus, you, you have to make that decision earlier.
Yeah.
Because you've got all the staff queued up, you know, there's just, you, you've got to make the decision earlier. So the first one at Parkside Park has been postponed. That'll probably be now like late July or August. But our first one, our next one, which will then be our first one now, is at the newly remodeled Riverwind Park. And that's really exciting because you'll be able to walk through the, the remodeled building. This is the building that really had deteriorated. There was a lot of talk about tearing it down, and instead, we remodeled it. The storm that came through allowed us to actually use insurance to put a new roof on it. And it's just, it's a beautiful building, and it's booked out. I mean, it was always been our most-used meeting space, and now it's just book solid. Yeah, and, and the park is redone, the new pickleball courts are there, so come out Tuesday night, whatever that date is.
June 25th. June 25.
Okay.
6:30 to 8.
For a meeting in the park.
Yeah. And if you can't make that one, there will be two more in July, for sure. So you can find those dates also on the city's website. We should also mention, our big Fourth of July celebration is coming up here in, geez, less than two weeks now.
Yes, yes, it is. Which also is worth mentioning, that there will not be a July 2 city council meeting.
Yeah. Because where will you be?
In the parade.
All right.
And hopefully, it'll be a glorious day like this, and it won't be baking hot or huge storms rolling in.
Yeah. So that kicks things off on July 2, the parade, around 6 o'clock down off Mississippi Boulevard and that, that neighborhood there by the ICE Center?
Yep. Yeah. So the, the parade route starts and ends at the ICE Center. And it's just a big loop down there down Mississippi Boulevard, direct drive, and up, I think it's Flora Street.
All right. So we'll have a good time there, July 2 through the 4th. Again, kind of all the festivities going on there at Boulevard Plaza, carnival games and rides. We have live music, bingo. There'll be a car show. There's a firecracker, 5K, 10K, and a kids' fun run, of course. Bingo, pull tabs, food, all that kind of stuff.
And it's important to know that the fireworks moved. They moved the fireworks from, from the old ICE Center parking lot, or ICE Center location, down to the west end of the college down on the fields.
As far as where they're shooting them off.
Where they're shooting them off. And what that does is that opens up about, I think it's like 600 parking spaces. And it keeps the fireworks in the same area, but it just moves them to a little bit different location on site there. And Anoka County Community College has been very gracious. And they, they said they'll make sure their sprinklers are turned off. And then they'll have, you know, the lights should go down, so, for the, for the events. And the parking, and the fireworks are going to be another tremendous year of fireworks, I'm sure.
Yeah. It's always, always a good time. Voted a top fireworks show in Minnesota, I'm reading.
Yes.
All right. Well, we'll check it out again this year. We are out of time.
Perfect.
All right. Thanks for being here today. Thank you at home for watching, and we'll see you back here after our two meetings in July.